Welcome to the July 8, 2025 City Council meeting, 6:30 PM in the City Council Chamber. Start with a prayer. Dear God, today is as such opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we grant at this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for a special blessing on all those who worked to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Does it include a flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Gitcher.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rook.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Chow.
Here.
Counsel Dakota.
Here.
Eleven present.
Moment of silence this evening. We're going into Section 2, Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication for Remote Student Participation. Motion to accept the petition filed by Counsel Mercier, other affairs AI, opposed motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, enter the City Council regular meeting, June 24th, City Council Special Meeting, June 30th, for acceptance. Motion to accept the petition filed by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Gitcher, other affairs AI, opposed motion passes. Section 4, City Council motions, 4.1, Counsel Yem, request city manager have the proper department install American flags along the New Thornlake Street corridor to celebrate the 4th of July honoring our nation's independence and adding a festive patriarch spirit to the key gateway into our city, seconded by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past 4th of July, we had a really good firework put together by our city. We have thousands of family coming to La Lacha Park to enjoy the firework, and I thought by having the flag on the Thornlake Street corridor will really put a really good show and then make it look good for the city as well. Next year will be the US 250 years on the 4th of July, so that would be a really good time to do as well. I understand that the city will celebrate my centennial starting March of 2026, so if we can do during that period of time and continue on, live it on, that will be also awesome as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Gitcher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I also add to Counsel Yem's motion to Duke Arm Street from Appleton to at least San Toros? When you come out of downtown, that area needs some heavy attention to it, and I think that that would be a good start, is to try to clean up that area in that way. Thank you.
Other affairs AI, opposed motion passes, 4.2, Counsel Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department review and address traffic calming measures on Fletcher Street, northbound from Broadway Street towards Pataca Street, including using speed awareness monitors, seconded by Counsel Mercier, Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion brought to me by a number of residents in that area, particularly that family who attending various events at the North Common and asking that if we could somehow do traffic calming measure, including that putting the speed awareness monitor, SAM, like we have right now on Stevens Street in Lowell, to let people know how fast they go, because it seems like from Broadway travel on Fletcher Street northbound, people kind of race it all the way to Bower Street, which is the four-way stop. There are seven crosswalk between Broadway and to Bower Street, and there's a lot of students who crossing the street from one side of Fletcher on the west side of the Fletcher Street to the school, and there's a lot of children. So this motion also requested by the school crossing guard, who asked that we do something about this. In this picture, if you see it, you know, from, it's hard to see, but there are seven crosswalk on here, and that's a concern of the school crosswalk as well. I just want to bring to the city attention, and if we could do something about this, that will be helpful. Thank you so much.
Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Counsel Robinson also has a motion later in these motions concerning common measures, I think for the 18th Street. And I believe two weeks ago, Counsel Janess, Counsel Belanger each had motions on, I believe, speeding on Butman Road and might have been the middle six Jackson corridor. People are not heating to the new speed limits. People are going as fast as they were before we put down this new 25 mile per hour. I don't know what we do, city manager, at this point. I don't know if to work with Superintendent Hoodon and maybe give him some overtime, but I'll tell you personally, we put a cruiser on Stevens Street, you'll have $5,000 worth of fines by the end of the day. I think it's citywide. It's every neighborhood. Each of the councilors have gotten calls from constituents saying that the speeding throughout the city, it needs to stop, and we need to send a message. So I think if you could work with Superintendent Hoodon and come up with a plan and start letting people know that we're paying attention here. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues. I think 18th is a unique situation too, where it's such a steep hill. Traffic calming measures or traditional traffic calming measures aren't really an option. Traffic engineer has clearly expressed that, so anything we can do to alleviate, you know, some of those hills, people rushing. Once Bridge Street backs up, you got people trying to cut through and around, and, I mean, unfortunately, I was informed by a resident that a family, I think it was of geese or ducks the other day, got hit from a driver flying. So again, I know we've brought this forward on 18th, to the point where the residents went out on their own and purchased speed bumps that unfortunately weren't right, but got kicked off on the side, but because of the slope, we can't install permanent, so any help is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the motions on the, for sure, the traffic calming motions are piling up, to say the least. It is, as Counsel Dakota stated, it's all over the city. It's everywhere. It's all, I hear very frequently in my district, whether it's neighborhood group meeting, or emails, or phone calls, whatever it may be. And we're going to keep making motions until we see what we want to see. And I think it needs to be a multi-prong approach here. The signs didn't get the results we want. Good effort, and by all means, well worth it. We're trying speed humps, and I think we need enforcement, and we need more enforcement out there on the streets. I mean, not so much Lowell Connector and that, I see a good visibility there on the connector, very dangerous, and I'm fine with that, but we need to get more in the neighborhoods with enforcement. But, Mr. Mayor, question through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, where are the, and the usual locations, I personally, I've made requests for the temporary speed humps. Is there any out there in the field as it stands right now? Do you know what the status on them may be?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. I'll check with our traffic engineer, but as many of the councilors know, a lot of the permanent speed humps are being brought into play. I know that last year, we brought in two, just to see how it was, if it was going to be successful, right? And I think that, quite frankly, over incentiveable, it was, it deemed itself to be extremely successful. So I think we're on the precipice of, with all of our paving that we're doing, and as this council knows, at one point in time, the city, we were spending approximately between $2.5 to $3 million on paving, but because of this council's leadership, we're in the process of probably spending upwards of $8, $9, $10 million, depending if we can. And that is being seen throughout the city, whether it be fog sealing, crack sealing, which I know there's a couple of motions about that today, but I think that, Counselor, we are moving in that direction, there's no question about that. I will check with the traffic engineer to find out where the temporaries are, but we've kind of left the temporaries aside, because even at this point, what our thought process is, with our localized paving, which is extremely popular with the entire council, we really like to take those intersections and do some localized pavings as opposed to the entire street, which we do tackle, but on that localized paving, we have that opportunity to bring in more permanent structures as far as speed humps. But I can get Liz Altman, Ms. Altman, to send a piece out to see where the temporaries are at this point.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that it really was this council that's been making the investments in the streets and the cities and the roads, with the deficiencies that we have, have had, quite frankly, throughout the city over the number of years where we're only spending, honestly, we know the number, $2.5 to $3 million per year. This council is really stepping up and spending close to two and a half times that amount over the past three years. So I think we're seeing the difference. I think that many councilors have already talked to me about what they've been seeing. I agree with you wholeheartedly in regards to speed, but I'll be talking to the superintendent to find out where we are in regards to year to year, year over year, when it comes to citations. We hate to give citations out, I think we've proven that in the past. We like to give warnings to kind of give people a heads up. We did do that during the implementation that this council did for 25 miles per hour, but that stopped, obviously. I want to say that it was the first 90 days, we gave people a written warning, or even a verbal warning, to let them know that 25 miles an hour is the lar of the city of Lowell, so maybe we need to just double back on that, and I'll get back to the council via email, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, but, you know, I do appreciate your strategy there with the localized, but that's typically the end of the paving season. Now, we have temporary speed humps that are paid for and in the bond, and they do us no good there. To my knowledge, there's none in the field that I've seen or heard. They need to, I'd like to see those out there as soon as possible, please, if you can make that happen. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gitcher, follow up with me on this one, but there was a motion filed by, I think by myself, Counsel Gitcher and Counsel Noon as well, about citations that were given for speeding since the warning of the 25 mile per hour succeeded, it was passed, I think it was six months, six months, Counsel Gitcher, and they had $775,000 in fines that were levied. So I know that was a concern, and, you know, I just don't want it to make it look like the police aren't doing their job, because people are getting bagged every day for speeding. So I would see a nuisance, but, you know, I wish we could put a cop on every sidewalk and street in the city, but we can't. Counsel Gitcher, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. I went to a baseball game last night in Rosendale, where the Acre team played, Maria Claudio played, and when you go down one of the roads, we got to be very, very careful about this speed bump thing. When you go down one road, every 20 feet, there's a speed bump, and if I lived in that house, I would not be happy. All you hear is ba-boom, 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 all the way through, so there has to be a happy medium. It's like the mayor just said, the police are doing their job, speeding, you know, you got better cars today than we've ever had. If you go back to when we were kids, you know, those cars didn't probably do 25, and you could see through the floorboards to the ground, and if you're doing 25, they were shattering apart. Today, everything's faster, so...
Forget, Counsel Gitcher, was it Camaro back then? And the wingtips were taken off.
It was like the Flintstones. But truthfully, when you get in these cars today, the electric cars, everything moves so much smoother in the traffic. If you tried to do 25 in the city, you're going to get rear-ended quick. So I agree with the mayor that we really have put a great step forward, we're raising funds for the city at the same time, and continue down that path. We just need more enforcement in certain areas. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with all the million of dollars we spend on street improvement, here come, you know, people will speed faster, you know? So the speed limit that we put forth hasn't, it's only been about a year. I know a couple of months ago, we got a report from the chief about the warnings, citations, and all that. It takes time, so we don't want to be a city that with, like Counselor Gitcher said, a speed bump city. But at the same time, we want to have some sort of a showing to the resident that we want a safe street, street where people respect the speed limit. It takes time. We will get there. You can get a report from the chief, I know that he has his people out there, enforce it, and warning them, and even a year after, giving a written warning. And that's how, the city's not about ticking you, it's about making sure that you obey the speed limit. 25 miles an hour, and sometimes people go a little faster than that, but not that fast than that. So I think if you look at the traffic calmness, we have to look at the whole city as a whole, that we need that. We do need that, giving that now our street more paved, potholed, more fixed, due to the 311, you know, hotlines and stuff. So take time. We all have to be patient on that.
Counsel Yem and Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one, I just want to mention that I understand that speed is an issue, but if we could focus on the area where the schools are, I think that's a very important, so like the motion that I brought here, because Mucklin is on one side, and the resident come from the west side of Fletcher Street, crossing particularly that particular, a quarter of a mile on Fletcher Street, you have seven crosswalks, starting from Broadway, Cross Street, and all of that, all the way to Bower Street. One thing I want to let residents know is that we thanks to the police department that also now at Bower Street, at the four-way stop, kind of enforcing, because some people just blew by that four-way stop between Bowers and Fletcher, and I noticed some officer who are monitoring that. It helps a lot to send message that, you know, this is a four-way stop, and they have to slow down. And that's, that's just my last comment, it's just focus on the, around the school area, on the measure of the calming of the speed, because that's really important, there's a lot of children going to school. So start from there, and then we go from the Royal Street. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager.
Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, as a council, can put forth all the speed bumps, all the traffic rules and laws, and you name it, we can do it, but I don't know how in this world can we instill common sense, common courtesy to certain people. They're just not going to do it, no matter how we turn blue in the face. So I think the only way to do it is to get them in their pocket with their wallet. That's the only thing that I can think of, because you'll always have people that are going to defy the law, they don't care about safety, it's all about themselves, and I don't know how to change that, except to find them. Thank you.
Other affairs AI, opposed motion passes, 4.3, Counsel Gitcher, Counsel Scott, request city manager have the wastewater department inspect the drain system on Born Street, and report back to the city council with the findings, no second needed. Counsel Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. Born Street, the residents have pushed about this, since there's been work done at Markley, they feel as though it's impeded on the drainage system, and we would have to agree, when you go over there and you look, something went on on the other side of the fence that's impeding the water from drainage over there. And if we can just have wastewater go over and give us a report, so that we can get that straightened out as soon as possible, because more and more, we're seeing heavier and heavier rains, and you'll see over there that there's a major flooding issue that's going on, that they didn't have before work was done in that area. If we can just get a report on that and get back to them as soon as possible, because it is a condition that can really dampen the neighborhood. Thank you.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you. Counsel Gitcher just said it all, but I would just say that every time I've gone over there, there's been thick mud down the entire left side of the road, it's always pretty flooded, so if someone could look into that, thank you.
Other affairs AI, opposed motion passes, 4.4, Counsel Gitcher, request city manager have the proper department outline why all the trees on Barrisford Ave were taken down during sidewalk and road paving project, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Counsel Gitcher.
There are some speakers here, Mr. Mayor.
On 4.4.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to combine them, 4.4 and 4.5? No? Okay.
And if they want to speak on both, if there's the same speakers on both, they can do that. Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure which motion I'm speaking on, the trees have been all taken down, so I'd like to just talk about what's left, which is the sidewalks. So my name is Stephen Conant, I live at 34 Barrisford Avenue in Lowell. I'm a lifelong resident of the city, in fact, three generations going back. I've been a, I love this city. I graduated from Lowell High, went to University of Lowell and got a master's degree in urban and environmental policy from Tufts University. I came back to work in this city, I was the city planner for the city, I was part of the Lowell Heritage State Park, and I founded the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. Why am I speaking here about sidewalks tonight? It's a bigger issue. We actually have a petition that's signed by close to 90 different people. There's not 90 people on that Barrisford Avenue. Right now, our street is in the process of being paved, it has pavement down the middle, brand-new asphalt. I thank the city council for that, and it's helpful. We're also going to narrow the roadway, which, relevant to our early discussion, should have a traffic calming effect. We have a huge volume of traffic that go down, and it's, we realize we're not the only street in the city that gets that, but in order to get past the intersection of Nesmith and Rogers Street, if you're going to Drake it, you cut down Barrisford Avenue. Without the trees that are on there, that simply intensifies, because trees have a traffic calming effect that's there. But again, what I'm here to talk about simply is about the proposal to replace what was concrete sidewalks that have been there for close to 80 years on our street with asphalt, which really doesn't really make sense. I don't know if people are familiar with the boiling frog, does anybody know the story of the boiling frog? If you take a frog and you put it in tepid water, and then you turn it on your stove and start to heat that up, that frog won't jump out of the water, it will just change until it's dead. The people on Barrisford Avenue are not frogs, but you're trying to cook us by effectively taking down the trees. The blacktop that was going to go on the street is, it's really about 20 degrees warmer already there, and all we're simply asking for is what the city does and asks private contractors to do, is that when you take out a concrete sidewalk, you replace it with a concrete sidewalk. Concrete sidewalks are much better than asphalt. The, people are going to say, well, it's cheaper to put in asphalt. It is cheaper, but in the long term, it's fiscally irresponsible to do that, because concrete lasts 50 years, up to 50 years. If you put in asphalt, asphalt, you have to seal it every three years if you have an asphalt driveway, if you don't, you know what happens to it? You have to seal that every, so the maintenance related to asphalt is much more, so it only makes good sense, fiscally responsible, to put in concrete, and especially put it in kind. And again, I'm not asking for the city to do anything more that it wouldn't ask any other private contractor to do. If I today had a concrete, if I had, I would have put in an asphalt driveway, and I would have crossed the city sidewalk that was concrete, the city would come after me and threaten me with a fine, and it's done that to private individuals, and threaten to find me if I did not replace the concrete with concrete. So all I'm asking, and all we're asking the people as part of this petition, is to replace in kind with in kind. It makes perfect sense fiscally, it's got a longevity, as again, the concrete that was in front of my house is probably there for 80 years, was in good condition, I won't say it was in great condition, I shovel it every year, but it's much better than the asphalt, and it really is something that's necessary. You can ask any civil engineer, we consulted with a couple, what's better for the two, and concrete comes out best in all fronts. And again, it's not that we're, we didn't have asphalt before, we had concrete, just replace in kind with in kind, and that's all we're simply asking. I appreciate your attention, I realize the city has a lot of bigger issues than maybe concrete and asphalt, but, you know, for folks who walk these streets every day, for my dog, whose feet are much hotter on an asphalt than a concrete pavement, concrete is lighter, it reflects light, takes away from the urban heat island that we're all trying to avoid, cuts down on our air conditioning costs, with all our trees gone, we don't have much left there. We're not boiling frogs. We think that you really need to take this under your consideration. I appreciate your attention, and I really thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and fellow residents. My name is Tim Rapley, and I am a disabled resident of Barrisford Ave. I look pretty good, but you can hear from this stammer. I've had MS for 25 years, and Parkinson's for over 10. My first attack of MS left me almost completely paralyzed below the waist, you know, a year, and whether I'm walking unaided, or with a cane, or even a year ago, before I found a new medication, I was having to use a roller later, like a walker with wheels. And I've shared all those ups and downs in 20 Barrisford with my wonderful, kind, supportive wife, and plan to age in place for as long as I possibly can, even as disease progression inevitably limits mobility in the future. I'm here to urge you to replace our sidewalks with concrete rather than asphalt, as is currently planned, not for reasons of aesthetics or tradition, but because of ADA compliance and the safety of myself and everyone else who lives on the street as we all age, because we're none of us getting any younger, are we guys? The American with Disabilities Act, or ADA, is designed to eliminate barriers in public spaces and assure that everyone, regardless of ability, can navigate our city safely and effectively. While the ADA doesn't mandate a specific material for sidewalks, it emphatically requires that surfaces be stable, firm, and slip resistant. This focus is on performance of the sidewalk, not just the material itself. My primary argument is this, concrete is inherently superior for consistently meeting and maintaining these critical ADA performance standards over time. And here's why. Concrete's inherent strength for accessibility, that when it's properly installed, concrete is inherently firm and stable, providing excellent support for mobility devices like wheelchairs, walkers, and canes. New concrete offers a very smooth and predictable rolling and walking surface. The ADA recommends avoiding materials or construction methods that can create bumpy and uneven surfaces, as these can be difficult and painful for wheeled mobility aids due to vibrations. Concrete by its nature can achieve this more reliably long-term. The significant drawbacks of asphalt for ADA compliance are these. Asphalt's primary disadvantage is its inherent softness, especially in Lowell's hot summer weather. This can lead to rutting depressions or a significant increase in rolling resistance for wheelchair users. This directly violates the ADA's firm and stable criteria. Asphalt is also more susceptible to potholing and surface degradation with heavy use and weather exposure. This results in a rougher, more uneven, and less predictable surface, much more quickly than concrete. Ultimately, asphalt generally requires more frequent maintenance to remain smooth and compliant compared to concrete, meaning it will likely fall out of compliance more often. While it's true that concrete is prone to cracking and heaving from tree roots or freeze-thaw cycles, which are common issues in Lowell, these issues can be mitigated with proper tree pit design and sufficient open porous areas for water infiltration. The city of Cambridge, while noting that asphalt has shown to be effective in preventing trip hazards from tree roots due to its flexibility, still generally prefers concrete because it is easy, quote, "easier to maintain and easier to walk on, and meets ADA specifications better overall." Furthermore, we don't have to look far for strong precedents on this matter from Cambridge and Boston. The city of Boston's public work department strongly prefers concrete for new sidewalks. Their standards explicitly state that new sidewalks shall be composed of concrete, even in historic districts where existing brick might be replaced. New accessibility ramps are always constructed with concrete. New accessibility ramps are always constructed with concrete, with brick or other specialty paver ramps explicitly not allowed to ensure a firm, stable surface. This demonstrates a clear understanding that concrete is the most reliable choice for accessibility. The city of Cambridge is...
Sir?
Sorry?
Well, past the three-minute mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, can I just conclude then? Cambridge says concrete is easier to maintain and easier to walk on and meets ADA specifications better. It's not just about cost. It's about long-term accessibility, safety, and the city of Lowell's legal and financial risks. Failing to maintain ADA compliance can lead to fines, lawsuits, and negative inspections. By prioritizing concrete, we choose a material that, with proper installation and diligent, ongoing maintenance, will consistently provide safe, firm, and stable accessible routes for all Lowell residents for years to come. Asphalt would actually be more expensive in the long run if it were used, because it needs to be repaired more often. So I just urge the city council to consider these critical factors for the disabled, not just me, but other disabled people. Thank you. Sorry I went over time.
Thank you. Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and allow David Price to come up to the podium to speak. I didn't think he'd come back in time, so I didn't include him in that list.
By Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Belanger, if that's a right. The motion passes. Just name and address, sir, for the record.
Just name and address, David.
Hi, my name is David Price. I've been a resident of Barrisford Avenue for over 50 years. My family had a business in Lowell for 80 years. And we had the business on Chansford Street, and we redid Chansford Street years ago. They replaced it with cement sidewalks, because cement was there. And the same thing should be applicable to Barrisford Avenue, as it was to Chansford Street. And the other streets in Lowell, which they are doing right now and have done in the last five years, have been all replaced with cement. From what I understand, it's a cost factor issue. And as far as the cost factor issue is concerned, they're squeezing the street by three feet. They're going to make it less wider. That three feet of asphalt that they would have put down, the money they saved, they can put that towards the cement, and they'll still wind up ahead. Cement is a lot better. It lasts a lot longer. Just look at Andover Street was put in the 1920s. It's still there with minimal maintenance, and it will always be that way. So weren't the sidewalks. And that's just about all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Address, David.
Oh, 14 Barrisford Avenue. I've lived there for over 50 years.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clark, anybody else? Just regarding this motion, Councilor Kachia, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the city's position is weak when they say it's a cost savings, because everybody knows that it's not. In the long term, asphalt absolutely costs you five times as more, because the replacement factor is sooner. It doesn't have the longevity.
So 5.4, right, Councilor? Just about the trees?
Yep, I'm getting to it, yep. And the trees would actually give it more life. And we're creating more and more heat islands as we go along in this city, as one of the speakers had said. And I don't understand why, Mr. Golden, when you were first the city manager, we had Highland Ave. Highland Ave, we went over with the neighbors before we did anything over there. We put the speed bumps in, we did the whole area over. You couldn't have happier people. And we put concrete in, we made it a very nice place, we added trees, took down it, but it actually has made it a better, more livable setting for everybody. We went over to Ruth Street, and we clear-cut, and then we take away the concrete, and we put in asphalt sidewalks, which is creating heat islands. And that's what we were battling against. You're sure there's an upfront cost to doing this stuff and shooting grades around trees, but there's no reason why we can't keep trees in the city. There's none. And we go to Cambridge. They have no problem with pouring concrete around trees and making it work. In every single community, we do this, and I'm sure, I'm shooting the messenger at this point, Mr. Manager, I'm sure you had no idea of this until it starts coming to your desk. And because I'm sure you don't look at every single street, every single project during a $9 million process of paving. And then someone calls you up, and you're at the 11th hour trying to say, "Oh, I don't know. Let me go take a look at this," because it's not in the wheelhouse of a city manager to do this. But it's in the...it's becoming it. It certainly is. But when you start looking at all of these areas and you're seeing, we're creating the heat islands that, I think it was Mr. Cohen said. And it's sad that we're cutting down these trees, 100-year-old trees, 80-year-old trees, watching them just go away because of cost savings and the argument of, well, you know, we can't shoot grades. I don't know any engineer who can't shoot a grade and make it work, ADA compliant and all. I don't know, and if they can't, we should get rid of them. They're not doing the work for the people that actually run the city. And it seems like we're a dictatorship at some points when we go through these neighborhoods, like Ruth Street. We talked about that, and it seems like we can't do anything except because the engineer said, "And it's cheaper this way, and that's the way we're doing it." Well, last I knew, the city residents pay the tax bills, and they're the ones who actually funnel this stuff. And we probably should have a conversation before we start ruining their neighborhoods that they've lived in for 50 years. And that's what we're doing. And even on another road in the Highlands, we talked about the trees getting cut down before, and you stepped in and said, "Whoa, let's slow down and see what we're doing first." I hope that your staff is getting the message that the neighbors still own these neighborhoods, and they need to have a conversation with the neighbors and come up with a reasonable solution and not have to do this every other week, as we've been doing with other streets and neighborhoods. And every single...they should understand that you have district counselors now, and people are going to be held accountable when it comes time for these things. And we should be trying to create less and less heat islands and save these trees and make it a better, more livable community. I thank you again, Mr. Manager. I think you'll take care of it and do the things right. But when you look at like some of the trees that we've cut down in this city, it's just appalling. You go down Inland Street, look at that street, and I get some of them were rotted, and there's questions on, you know, whether they were or they weren't. If you really want to do things right, get a tree warden in here and get someone who knows what they're doing when they start looking at these trees and not just cut them down and then say, "Okay, here we are." Thank you again.
Councilor Robinson?
Mr. Mayor, this is our motion, isn't it?
I'm sorry, I thought we...no, this is just 4.4, the trees.
Okay.
4.5 is next. Councilor Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing, I've brought this forward before, is, and again, it stands out to me, Montreal. The way they do it, trees, I mean, you see our downtown. The trees that were selected to plant are downtown. The trees that were selected to plant along McPherson's Park, they were the wrong type. The tree roots damaged the sidewalks something tremendous. In Montreal, I go back to, they plant, and it's deep enough in the sidewalk where pretty much the roots are air-pruned. There's enough space that the roots don't end up heaving, and it's a certain type of tree. And I think that's something moving forward, that we really need to get an inventory together of acceptable trees for public walks. And I think as we remove the sick and dead and projects are going on, replace with those that aren't going to put us back in this situation. So I agree. I think there's many areas in the city where our walkways have been decimated due to trees. And it's, again, it's human error. It's the wrong planting, and it's the wrong type of tree. So I think it's really worthwhile to figure out what trees are going to work moving forward in the future to mitigate any of these covenant damages. Thank you.
Councilor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Kachia. I know that not too long ago, Councilor Kachia was also asking that the manager is looking into forming a tree committee. And there was an individual then at that time who you said should chair that committee. I agree. I agree. And I believe our sustainability directors, Katrin Moses, who's in the audience now, would agree that, you know, those healthy tree, cutting it, you know, it's certainly going to create a heat island for that area, whether that be Balverdeers, anywhere in the city of Lowell. So if it's healthy, then if having a committee, the committee then would communicate it or getting input from residents before cutting it down. And cutting it down is not the answer. I know that we've been trying to, you know, plant some more tree. You know, that tree that we planned would take 10 to 20 years to grow, and the one that we cut down, the healthy one, that's not supposed to be done. It's going to hurt the city. It's going to hurt the resident in terms of creating the heat island that we tried to get rid of. So I think, you know, going forward, we need to get that, forming that tree committee as soon as possible. And future, cutting off tree, the healthy one especially, you know, in certain areas, it need to be communicated or having meeting with resident input on that. Thank you.
There is a registered speaker here, Mr. Mayor. Erin Gendron?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, councilors. I wanted to speak on this motion to find the means to put the concrete sidewalks on Barrisford Ave. I believe that investing in quality infrastructure now will pay its dividends in the long run. It's very fiscally responsible. The concrete on Barrisford Ave, much like most of Andover Street and other areas in Lowell, were put in place in the 1920s and the '30s by the WPA during the Great Depression. It's about 90 years. We've well made our money since then. The vision of investing in quality was there and has stood the test of time. There are still WPA markers in the concrete in some areas of Andover Street from the 90 years ago. I know concrete costs more upfront, but over time, it can save us from having to come back again and again to fix and replace asphalt that breaks down more quickly. Thank you for consideration.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the city council, I have a system. The system is I try to do things behind the scenes. Sometimes it happens. Other times like this, it doesn't. I asked this to happen with no luck. I was told we didn't have the money. I understand money is tight. Money was tight in the Highlands when a person got his sidewalk done, and he had asphalt. But I am persistent, and that's why I made this motion, because to me, it's the principle of the thing. It's the principle of the issue. These are people that did not have hot top and said, "Gee, I think I'd like to spruce it up a bit and get cement." They had cement since 1929, and that's what I feel we should put their sidewalk back to the condition that it was before they ripped it, we ripped it apart. So I'm asking if we could still install hot top, I mean, a cement. Then I was told if we give cement to Barrisford Avenue, it'll be like a domino effect, and every street along the perimeter, along the next one, the next one, would want it. Well, it never happened to me. I never got one call from any other street. But I did look in the city's GIS to see what was there before. So Barrisford Avenue had hot top all down the street. Plummer Avenue, hot top on one side. Glen Road, no sidewalks. 11, 26, 56, 78, 48, no sidewalks at all on Glen Road. So I don't know if we're even going to give them sidewalks. I know I live on Burnham Road. We don't have sidewalks there. Not that they're doing our street. They're not. But we wouldn't want one anyway, because we faced this years ago. So the sidewalks that we don't want on Burnham Road, let them have that extra money and put it on Barrisford Avenue. Windsor Park Road, 60, no sidewalks. 42, no sidewalks. 24, no sidewalks. I don't even know if we're putting sidewalks. So it wasn't a domino effect. Nobody called me. And I'm not talking about the other side, even the other side. Nobody called me from the other side of Andover Street. I'd like to give them what the condition that they already have. That's all I'm asking. If they had, and I'm going to be honest, and they're not going to like what I'm going to say, if they had hot top and they wanted cement, I don't know that I could do that. But they have cement, and I think when we ask utilities, "You fix that hole, you dig in that hole, you put it back to the condition that it was in, if not better." Well, we're no different either. We should put their sidewalks back to the condition that it was, and that was cement. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for anything out of the ordinary. That's...and I'm kind of begging, so I'm really begging. Because they deserve it. They had it. It's not like, like I said, I don't want to reiterate and say it again and again. But I think it's that important to me that I made this motion, because I'm persistent, because it's the principle of the thing. So having said that, if there's nobody that wants to speak, I'll let everybody that wants to speak. I'd like to call, a roll call on that after. Thank you.
Councilor Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all the residents of Barrisford Ave for coming down to the chambers tonight. It's been a great experience working with them on this. We have a group text going, among emails and phone calls, and considering their high level of engagement here on this matter. There probably should have been, with the project of this magnitude and the transformation of the street, granted, there's some good going on here at the same time. You know, there probably should have been an input session back in the spring. And I would have been glad to spearhead it and go door-to-door to see, go over the plan, see what their thoughts are, and just maybe, maybe they would have sacrificed the narrowing of the street for cement sidewalks, and we could have offset costs in that manner. And that could all have been negotiated and discussed at that appropriate time. But to Councilor Mercier's point, you know, the ask here is not to upgrade to cement. It is to maintain what has been there for many, many decades. So we all know that we've worked with the traffic engineer. As far as speed humps, unfortunately, they're not doable with the steep pitch of the street. So maybe there's a cost savings there that we could allocate to the upgrade, the additional costs to maintaining concrete. Now, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, I know what your administration is trying to accomplish here, and I applaud it. You know, there's roughly 20% less in cost, give or take, to go asphalt. You get more linear fee throughout the city. I understand it. I get it. It's a business approach. You're trying to get more linear fee throughout the city. It's understandable. But in this case, it's what's been there. We cannot go transforming...we're not doing it around schools and city-owned buildings. We're maintaining cement in those cases. But as well as the neighborhoods, they deserve it. It's what's been there, and I think it should stay. So that being said, I want to echo Councilor Mercier's request and ask that you consider, your administration considers your decision along with Commissioner St. Seiya. There is still time to somehow maybe defray costs in other areas, if possible, to maintain concrete on Barrisford Avenue. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Kachia?
Mr. Mayor, the argument that concrete is more or less, if you go to Powell Street, they just did Powell Street in concrete, and it never had concrete. Back central, we had streets over there that didn't have sidewalks, and we put concrete sidewalks in. So I don't understand where the line is between what we replace with and what we don't replace with. I mean, Powell Street, I grew up right there, and it's now concrete. I just don't know how we go from a neighborhood who has a nice setting that they love to someone just taking over and doing in-kind what they want without even speaking to anybody. So I would ask the same thing as the other councilors, that we at least reconsider it and do the concrete sidewalks. Thank you.
Councilor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We cannot do anything about the tree, right? What we can do about is, you know, replaces what was there, cement with cement. So I'll vote to support it.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I just have questions around why the choice was being made to do asphalt instead of concrete, the cost difference. I honestly, you know, I feel for the residents. They want what they always had. That being said, we obviously are in quite the hole for fixing sidewalks and streets across the city, up to the $260 million, I had heard you say. So again, I would just ask that there's an equitable distribution of funds, I guess, across the districts. If this is the choice that's made, that they want concrete in their neighborhood, then that's fine. But it might be that something else isn't getting done. I live on Woobin Street. It's a major busy road. There's no sidewalks at all. There's no sidewalks at all. People in my district would be thrilled to have asphalt sidewalks down Woobin Street. I walked down Back Central last night, down Central Street, lots and lots of pedestrians out, and the sidewalks are in complete and total disrepair. So there's choices that we're making. I honor the wishes of the people to make that choice, but I would just keep that in mind, I guess. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I agree. I think, I think what this brings up is a larger issue where I think we need to solidify our policy moving forward. I think, I agree with my colleagues. I think if we're taking something out, we put it back. If it's concrete, we put it back. I also think we need to carve out some of the benefits of concrete as opposed to asphalt. I think major walkways that are going to be maintained with winter operations with heavy equipment lend themselves better to concrete sidewalks. I think heavy pedestrian traffic where ADA compliance in those issues, it's going to make more sense, in my opinion, to put concrete sidewalks with off-ramps and on-ramps because, again, we get longevity out of it. I think other areas, if there's no sidewalks, maybe we look to asphalt. Maybe that also has to be tied in with tree plantings to kind of mitigate the heat island effect that the asphalt sidewalks are going to create. I know there's certain sections of Centerville that our sidewalks are in dire need of repair, and asphalt is what's there, and we'll be thrilled to get that done once we can get the funding stream ready and all that. So I just think this kind of opens the door to a larger discussion. I will be supporting replacing what was there tonight with the cement. And I do think, though, moving forward, we need to carve out clear set of guidelines and policy on, when decision-making starts to happen on replacement or installation of sidewalks, we need to have some kind of policy that dictates and determines what material's going to be used where. Thank you.
Anything else? Just a quick comment up here. You know, if we're going to decide to do this today with concrete, I don't think it matters if it was in Belvedere or South Lowell, the Acre or Centerville. Every resident should deserve the same thing as Belvedere gets, just because a neighborhood's engaged, you know, shouldn't be a deciding factor whether the concrete sidewalks are put in or not. It should go across the board for everybody. You know, I have a hard time, you know, cherry picking and doing just this. I mean, if this council wants to adopt that every sidewalk we repair from now on is going to be concrete, I'll take that motion. If not, I can't support this as it is. So Mr. Clark will call.
Councilor. This is. Councilor Getchea.
Yes.
Councilor Janess.
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Oh.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yem.
Yes.
Councilor Belanger.
Yes.
Councilor Chow.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
4.6, Councilor Belanger, requests City Manager of the Department clean all gateways into the city in preparation of the Lowell Folk Festival, seconded by Councilor Janess. Councilor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the Folk Festival is about two weeks away, and with good weather, and I know we will get it, we'll be expecting about 150,000 during that three-day weekend. So we want our city to shine and look its very best. So that being said, Mr. Manager, could you please have the appropriate departments take a look at all the gateways coming into the city, train station, whatnot, and let's look like a shiny new Patty throughout the city. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Janess, if you have your hand up?
Apologize.
Okay, all right. Councilor Chow and Councilor Getchea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the council making these motions, coming from a council that has been working the Folk Festival every single year since I've known it, and I have been very fortunate to also have volunteer on the Bucket Brigade every year. This is number one or number two biggest and free Folk Festival in the country, and as the maker of the motion mentioned, we have hundreds of thousands of people coming not just from all over state, but from the entire country, from all over the world. I have the fortune to have met people from Germany, from the Netherlands, and from other countries as well to come visit Lowell. This is going to be a great event. Ever since the pandemic, we've been having record visitors every single year, and it's making, you know, Lowell is becoming the limelight more and more, as tonight we'll hear from the delegations going to talk about Lowell being the front runner of the city. So we are giving attention, and Lowell is on the map with every possible project that we have been doing. So I think this is a good motion to make sure that we put our best foot forward. This being on the summer schedule, it's not going to be, you know, the next meeting's going to be too close to the Folk Festival. I don't want to put Mr. Manager on the spot, but instead of waiting for the report to come in on what's being done, I don't know if you can briefly just give us a quick synopsis of what's being done throughout the city to make the gateway, to come to gateway, to welcome the people, the traffic signs, you know, pick up trash and what have you, security. If you could just briefly update us, because, you know, the next report coming is going to be too close to the Folk Festival. Again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you're working on it right now, if you could give us a quick summary, that'd be great.
Councilor Getchea, I'll go first.
Thank you. Through you, the manager, Golden. Do we already have a checklist of what things we need to get done for the Folk Fest beforehand? Each department?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, yes and yes to both councils. We have that checklist. We are moving. Mr. Mashad, I'll be talking with Mass DOT, or has been talking to Mass DOT, to try to get all of that. Quite frankly, we started a couple, probably upwards of three weeks, three weeks ago now, because with DOT, it does take us time to get all the entranceway cut, all the connectors and everything else. So we've started with the painting, the sidewalk, excuse me, sidewalks, we were just talking about sidewalks. The crosswalks downtown will be buffed up, so this is all in process and is happening. And you are right, we do go through our checklist that we go through every year.
And it should be for every event. The Firefighters Memorial's been going on for the last four years since we've all been here, and when you go over there, the ADA compliant pad is still broken up there. It was broken again this year during, it was broken the year before, and you've asked 100 times. And if we're going to go over these areas prior to, we should, and I understand what Councilor Belanger's saying, is that he has to say something because he doesn't feel that it's going to get done. And I think we all have lost confidence in a lot of things like that, or we may never had confidence in it because that's the way it's always been, been. But when you look at these areas and we're bringing people to them, the Firefighters Memorial, that pad should have never been broken. It should have been nice and cleaned up out there. We should respect what we're doing, or we shouldn't have the dedications. And it's the same thing with this. If we can't even do the simple things, what are we selling to people?
But, Councilor, we had done this. We have this all set to go.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying why people don't have confidence that we've got to put in motions like this. There's a lot of motions that come in like this. You know, we talk about other things that go on, and we're not, we're not meeting the mark, and, or we wouldn't need motions. And that's what's going on. And when you look at it, the confidence level has to go back up, whether it's the South Common being cut on the rotary coming in, or the overpass that was supposed to be done with the flowers and everything, we're not seeing it. So I think the line striping and stuff like that. So we're hoping that we can bring visitors here and we shine this city like it needs to be. Thank you.
All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. Councilor Scott, you want to bundle the next three?
Actually, you can bundle all four.
All four, even better. Thank you. Motion by Councilor Scott to bundle 4.7 through 4.10, seconded by Councilor Yem. All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. 4.7, Councilor Scott, requests City Manager to have appropriate department evaluate adding Bigelow Street and Lowell Street to the crack sealing list. 4.8, Councilor Scott, requests City Manager to have appropriate department evaluate adding sections of Divine, Armond, Bernia, Delmont, Suttle to the local paving list. And 4.9, Councilor Scott, requests City Manager to have appropriate department evaluate adding two sections of Lauren Street between the fire station and Father Curran Park to localized paving list. And 4.10, Councilor Scott, requests City Manager to provide an update on the status of trunk and stump removal of trees in the right of way, all seconded by Councilor Yem. Councilor Scott.
Thank you. These all came from residents' concerns, obviously. If we could just get an evaluation done on these, they've, they've been filled and refilled and refilled. There are potholes on top of potholes. I don't think you could fill them anymore than they already are. So I really think they need to be candidates for local paving, most of them. So if you could just have them all evaluated, and same with the tree stumps that are in the right of way, they came, they took some of the stumps down, some of the trees down, they left the stumps, but they're in the middle of the sidewalk. Thank you.
All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. 4.11, Councilor Robinson, request City Manager of the Department address the ongoing speeding issues on 18th Street, seconded by Councilor Dakota. Councilor Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. 4.12, Councilor Robinson, request City Manager of the Department inspect all trees in Richardson and in McPherson Park for any health issues, seconded by Councilor Noon. Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. This was brought to my attention by a resident. With all the traffic in the park, with softball tournaments and everything else and summer usage, they're saying that there's some trees over there that limbs are falling down and they haven't really been uplifted or maintained, and I think a thorough inspection of that area would be warranted. Thank you.
All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. 4.13, Councilor Robinson, request City Manager of the Department look at installation of additional streetlight in the area of 124 Ledlem Street, seconded by Councilor Noon. Councilor Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. 4.14, Councilors Robinson and Getchea, request City Manager of the Department provide a detailed report on the city's rating responsibility in the review and performance evaluation process of the OPM, architects, and other contractual agents of the Lowell High School project. No second needed. Councilor Robinson, you're up.
Thank you. This motion, I think, warrants a conversation, and I don't know if it's something that would be better served referred to maybe a subcommittee or a conversation, or should we wait for the response in order to refer it? I just, I'd like to know the process and what's our responsibility and duties as far as reporting or performance evaluations of the OPM, the architects, and any of the contracted employees of this Lowell High School project, because it seems like we've been asked repeatedly to step up, to bring this to the finish line. So I just would like to know the entire process and if we're going to our residents explaining that we're having challenges getting to that finish line, I think we need to know what course of action we have to, and who do we let know the challenges that we've been facing. Thank you.
Councilor Getchea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, Golden. Do you know if there's a path that we're going to evaluate the OPM and the architect?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council, yes, during the closeout phase, MSBA does have an opportunity for us to go through some of these situations, so that would be happening. But I don't think it's a, it's a bad idea maybe to put it into subcommittee to have further discussion. That could be a possibility. I'm just making sure that's okay with, with the solicitor. But this will, we will have that opportunity at the end. No question.
Thank you. I think that we absolutely should go to DCAM, and, which is the Division of Capital Assets and Management and Maintenance. And there's no question we should do that, because what it does is it, it will be something that other communities can actually look at these contractors and understand, look, they didn't perform in Lowell, and it sets a record saying, look, if they can't do Lowell, they're not coming to us. And I wish other people would have done the same thing for us, because we would have been able to review that and made sure of it. And there's seven questions that are posed in that handout, that evaluation process. One of them is contract administration. Did the design provide adequate support during the bid and award process? And we would all, I'm sure, say, there is no way. And then if you go through these things and you start going through, and I won't, because I think that you get into a gray area that we shouldn't be talking about right now, but there are things on here that should absolutely be evaluated and set forth so that other communities don't have to go through the same thing. Because this is totally, totally, and I think the whole council agrees, it's a path that no community should ever have to take. I thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that we get a copy of this at the end when we're all done, or we go into executive session to talk about these things, because I think in executive session, I think that we all should have a path to watch this evaluation more so than a subcommittee, because executive session, everybody in here should have their say on how they feel this process went for all of us. Thank you.
Touchy subject, Councilor Getchea.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, in faith, $40 million is even touchier.
All the Fairs AI oppose motion passes. Motion responses, 5.1. Councilor Noon, you want to take A, B, and C together?
I can take.
You got it. Motion response, A, assessment center preparation costs; B, civil service exam; and C, hybrid hiring. Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate Chief Houdon for the report. 5.1A, I strongly believe that we need to get into in-depth discussion on this, dive into what possible. The report as is, it's not clear. It's a lot of question. That 5.1A motion respond, I'd like to send that to Public Safety Subcommittee. 5.2, motion respond, Mr., I was talking about the exam and the outreach and the workshop and stuff that the chief and the department doing. I'm very happy to see that happen and that continue in recruitment effort. We need to do more if we can. 5.1C, motion respond, it has to do with hybrid model. You know, it's, I'm happy that the state has given us the tool to do more, and that tool is important to us, because 50, 50/50, you can take 50 out of the civil service exam and 50 from the civil service exam, but I do encourage people to take the exam. But for those who are, we are in need of, you know, feeling and the department, the force to reflect the people that we serve, that the opportunity now to do so. So that motion respond, I'd like to send it to the Public Safety Subcommittee to dive into that further. And then you have the Community Advisory Committee. This is a public, this is a committee, is, you know, and you have it, you put in the agenda, you have an agenda, it's, you know, it's a public meeting, you have a minute for that. And the report, well, let's say that we should do a better job at it. Let's, I too like to send this to the Public Safety Subcommittee and inviting member of the Citizen Advisory Committee to have some discussion on it. And now there are opportunities as well to see what input do you get from the public and what input do you have as a committee now that we have the hybrid hiring? Can you see it without, you know, can you see it with your own eye, what needs to be done there in term of the, the hybrid hiring model in term of to, to address the issues in the force now that we have? Those are the three, 5.1 to 5.3. As far as the 5.1E, I appreciate the motion respond very much, and I, I trust CFO to work closely with the directors of the LTC. I appreciate the manager's letter to the chair for the, I believe, the chair for... the, yes, yes, exactly. So, so I know that some of the issue with the, with the LTC and maybe not issue, opportunity for LTC to do more of community accessing, you know, like I say, working with the Lowell High School sport channels and, you know, education content and stuff like that. But the bigger, bigger picture is their location out, and so that discussion need to be had. You know, I know that CFO has a lot of idea, and you too, Mr. Managers, working with the directors of LTC to do what we can to help them to survive, because we use them a lot. Lowell Folk Festival is coming up, and they are our, you know, access, they are our resource in term of getting those information out to the public. So thank you for all the report. Appreciate it.
All right. Councilor Noon ran right through Section 5. Thank you very much, Councilor. Councilor Janess, you want to speak on D?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree with Councilor Noon. I think it'd be good to send this to a Public Safety Subcommittee, so I'll send that, make that in the form of a motion. But otherwise, I thank the administration and Superintendent Houdon for the response here. I think that the Citizens Advisory Council Committee really puts the community in community policing, or at least is a big part of that. It's really about trying to get the community opinions and be able to foster that, that communication, to build trust, and, and to do all the things that I know our police do. to build trust and to do all the things that I know our police department wants to do and is working hard on, so I think sending it to a Public Safety Subcommittee is the way to go here, to continue that conversation and try to deepen those connections and make it as effective as we can. Thank you.
Great. We'll take that one second. Council Robinson, you want to speak on LTC?
Yes, please, just briefly, again, I echo Council Noon, I thank you for all your efforts to try to work and collaborate with LTC, through you to the manager. Have we basically asked LTC if they have any ideas on how we could maybe help them to bring in additional revenue or kind of stabilize what they need for operating expenditures? Because maybe it's not the city handing money over to keep them stable, maybe it's just bringing in community partners and trying to facilitate a working relationship with them that somehow is beneficial for both parties. I think if, I'd love to see if maybe you could reach out and just ask them, hey, can you brainstorm, and is there anything that we can help you, help facilitate you to kind of nurture and work on your own, because I think every one of us here value tremendously what LTC does, and it is a shame to see cutting the cord has directly impacted them, amongst other things, and I mean, as we're all aware, financially, it's tight across the board for everybody, we don't have a ton of income to just throw around like that, but anything we can do to help them kind of get stronger, I say, let them come to us with some suggestions too. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council Adam from LTC is here, we, I think we have a great working relationship, but I think you hit the main point. One of the, the main issue, the only issue, is that people are cutting the cord, and I will be speaking to Chair Cusack, at least from the House side, to talk about what can be done or what should be done. This is a challenging issue on Beacon Hill as well. There's a lot of reluctance, and Adam, I just want to make sure you give me the nod when this happens, but there's a lot of reluctance, I think, on the legislative standpoint, the legislative standpoint, to change how we assess fees. So currently, right now, with way, the way the old Comcast, I think that we're all very used to, how that operates, you know, the cord itself, that is, there's a fee tied to that, and that fee comes back to cities like Lowell, Chelmsford, everywhere, for their telecommunications. However, with everyone cutting it, that fee has been going downwards, so there's a, there's a real reluctance, I think, in the legislature to make that change and to start saying to people that getting onto the internet is going to cost you X dollars. So that's, that's a real difficult thing, I know a little bit about it when I was working within the committee, but I will talk with the chair, I will talk with Adam, I'm sure, Adam, anything we could do to help increase finances for them from that perspective, but I will have that conversation to see if there's any type of other assistance that we can offer. They do a great job here for us locally, as was mentioned just a moment ago, in regards to the festivals that we have, they're always here and stepping up, so I think they might have some ideas, but really, truly, I really believe it happens within the Commonwealth, within the House of Representatives and the Senate and the governor.
Thank you, and I see there's a letter drafted and greatly appreciated, hopefully we can get something moving, so thank you.
Motion by Council Noon, second by Council Janess, to take motion responses A, C, and D to a Public Safety Subcommittee, also FSRI, pause, motion passes. I can run through just the agenda rather quickly and get to the UEF people, is that okay? All right, motion by Council Janess, second by Council Getchea, also FSRI, pause, motion passes. We'll do 6.8 first, because that's an amended vote, 6.8, vote to transfer $1,225,900 to General Fund Energy. Mr. CFO.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, but there was a slight change to the detail in the attachment A of the vote, so it's still the same bottom line number of 1.22 million. This is a year-end transfer for energy needs in the General Fund, there are separate votes that follow for the other enterprise funds. Ms. Moses is here this evening, if there's questions about energy, but the reason for the change, what has to do with the final payroll of the year, we were taking some money from police and fire, that we had to change the amount before the final payroll was run, so we've made those changes, this is for FY 2025, which has completed, but we're able to make transfers up until the 15th day of July, so before you is those amended amounts, it's still the same bottom line, we would recommend approval as amended by the City Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve.
By Council Mercier, second by Council Dakota, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
5.3, Communication of City Manager, request approval for outstate travel, one for Lowell Police Department, motion to adopt by Council Getchea, second by Council Dakota, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
All right, going to 6.1 to 6.12, or 6.8, already being voted on. 6.1, vote to accept and expend $135,472.79, OLRH grant. 6.2, vote to accept and expend $149,417, BHOAP grant. 6.3, vote to accept and expend $1 million on community project funding grant. 6.4, accept and expend $20,000 for jail arrest diversion program grant. 6.5, accept and expend $250,000 Mass Call 3 grant. 6.6, a vote to accept and expend $773,400 SSYI grant, Lowell Police Department. 6.7, a vote to authorize city manager entering a license agreement with Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. 6.9, vote to transfer $113,000 to LTC Medicare. 6.10, vote to transfer $191,000 for wastewater energy. 6.11, vote to transfer $250,000 for water energy. And 6.12, vote to transfer $41,000 for parking energy. Motion to adopt by Council Robinson, second by Council Yum. Council Robinson, say something.
I just want, I just wanted to comment on 6.4. I'm glad to see, I think this is huge, I know this is something when we first got on the council, it was kind of in its infancy stages, and I'm glad to see that we were able to secure 20,000 to help some clinicians that are working with Lowell Police Department for mental health, jail arrest diversion. You know, I've heard a lot from the community how it is a vital tool, I mean, it's a very necessary tool, and I think any money we can get to help with these kind of tools that, you know, have proven their weight in gold, so to say, in the community, I'm all for, so thank you very much.
Council Yum, got something?
I'm just going to make a quick comment on 6.3, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor. 6.3, quickly, 6.3, I just want to say thank you so much for this, this work that's being prepared, and I always want to have this become a premier road, because it connects UMass Lowell to the city of Lowell. My last question is, Masswork gave a grant to the city of Lowell back last year when Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito was here, awarded the city 1.72 million, so that would we add on to the million dollars that we have now, right, Mr. Mayor, through you, through managers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, that's correct.
Thank you so much.
Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. 6.1 through, 12, through you to the manager, the free charging stations for the parking garages and stuff, are we walking away from that and going to start charging people? Is that what we're looking at? The 41,000, I think it's 6.12? It's just about the energy for the parking garages and use?
Mr. Mayor to Ms. Moses, I'm just looking, I don't think it's one, it's jacket, 612.
Yeah, 6.12.
Thank you for the question, Council Getchea, or through the mayor to you, Council Getchea. That is something that we're exploring, because to this point, we have not charged the cost of energy to reimburse us for the use of our chargers across the city. This is actually very unique in Lowell, most other communities do charge for not only the energy use, but also the maintenance of the chargers themselves. I've been working with the parking director to try and right-size that charge, and there should be ordinance changes forthcoming.
So just, my point is that we got to move up quicker, because right now, our parking enterprise is in the negative, and we're looking at everything else in the negative, why are we giving away free energy? It should be a charge, and we need to get moving on it, it shouldn't be we're working on it, it should be we're getting to it and we're getting done, because it's a cost to us, so if, Mr. Mayor, through you to manager, if we can get to it, that's all.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Council, you're correct, I believe, and I think I'll look to Ms. Moses for this, when we first got them, there were some strings attached to this, so with our parking enterprise fund, et cetera, that is our plan to start to, start to charge, so that maybe it will be a pain point for those who have been, quite frankly, getting free energy, to charge their cars. However, I truly believe it was strings, there were strings attached to it, that we had to have it in the appropriate places, in parking garages, and it was offered at that time, so we will be moving towards a fee for, I guess, electricity at some point in the future, in the near future.
The thing that stands out the most is just the transfers, that CFO Baldwin just put here in energy costs, and this is a point where hopefully we can get to relatively quickly, so that we can start saving some funding there and push it the other way.
I'm confident Ms. Moses will be working with Mr. Ryan, and we'll make that happen sooner than later.
Thank you.
Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 6.4, I don't know, I thought we already had two full-time co-response clinicians already. Didn't we already have two already before? Is this money for two more on top of it, so what are we going to have, four?
Lieutenant. Good evening, councilors. This is a stopgap budget from the state budget that's allowing us to continue our funding into the fiscal year 2026 budget. We have two full-time clinicians on staff, and we're expecting additional funding through the state budget, and this is just a stopgap to get us there.
Oh, it's not adding two more on top of it?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you, chief.
You're very welcome.
And the next question is, on 6.6, we're talking about $773,400, how much of that will UTEC get? Do we know?
I don't have the exact dollar figure, but they take most of that through the pass-through grant funding.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Mr. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 6.10 to 6.12, 6.10 has to do with wastewater, 6.11 waters, and 6.12 is parking, all this energy transfer. We do this every year, right? So this is like a transfer that allows this department to pay their end-of-the-year energy bill, is that correct?
CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct, it's before the council as a vote, because we're using funds that were appropriated for salary and wages, so there's some surplus available to transfer into the energy account, which is an ordinary expense, however, they are able to cover it within each separate enterprise fund, so water is able to pay for its own electricity, sewer, parking, et cetera.
Right, right. With the exceptions that the parking couldn't pay for their own parking and water, right? Because it's a deficit. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct, councilor, and we do have, as you noted, the parking enterprise was subsidized, excuse me, by the General Fund this year, as well as in FY 2026, so it is the revenue of the garages, the on-street operation, not sufficient to cover the, cover the whole of the operations and the debt service.
All right, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
Seven reports to the committee this evening, eight petitions, 8.1, claim for property damage, motion for law enforcement for apartment renovation by Council Getchea, second by Council Dakota, also FSRI, pause, motion passes, 8.2, miscellaneous. Jenny Barbeto requests permission to address the council regarding installation of traffic measures at High, Ash, and East Merrimack Street.
I have some brochures.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Jenny Barbeto, I have, am a homeowner and resident of Lowell for the last 25 years on East Merrimack Street, 251 East Merrimack Street. We live opposite the Immaculate Conception School and the Lowell General Saints Campus. In October of 2017, my car and my neighbor's car was run into by a speeding car, by a speeding van, and it was totaled. There are the photos in the front. In 2019, my neighbor's car was hit again by another speeding car and was totaled again. In 2024, my neighbor, two floors, two stores, two houses down, was also hit, and his car was totaled. And in, three weeks ago, in June of this year, another speeding car hit both of my neighbors and my car, and again, totaled, both totaled. The intersection, we have noticed, since I've been here 25 years, I've noticed a huge amount of traffic and speeding occurring in East Merrimack Street, especially since 2014, the conversion of the two-way street system in downtown Lowell. Since then, we've had a lot of extra traffic, a lot of extra noise, a lot of extra trucks, and definitely a lot of speeding, as is obviously many other streets in the city. I do know that, from research, that the intersection of East Merrimack Street and High Street is no stranger to the city council, you have referred to it a few times and know how dangerous it actually is. There was a, there was a report that between 2012 and 2016, there were 30, more than 30 motor vehicle accidents on that corner. Since 2019 to present, there's been an extra 63 motor vehicle accidents on that corner. I would like, and everybody in my area, would like to see traffic lights installed at the corner of East Merrimack Street and High Street, and I know that there is a hospital and a school there. From living here for 25 years, we have noticed that ambulances and all emergency vehicles go straight through High Street and cross over East Merrimack Street, staying on High Street, they do not turn into East Merrimack and into St. James Court. Other emergency vehicles come from the east, they drive into East Merrimack Street from Nesmith and turn right into the hospital at St. James Court. So we're also hoping that, again, speed humps, not the speed bumps, which are bigger and will cause more noise, but the speed humps that seem to be proving well in Douglas Road could also be installed, and as they say, consecutive speed humps are more conducive to reducing the speed of that area. So we're hoping that installing traffic lights on the corner of East Merrimack Street and High Street, as well as two, maybe two, if possible, speed humps in front of the Immaculate Conception School, as you can see, there has been a car that has just flown straight into the Immaculate Conception School, would definitely control the speed of that street to and from the city. I would just like to mention too, that we have noticed that there are no speed limit signs of the 25 limit, downtown speed limit, city limit, from Town Hall all the way to Nesmith Street, on Merrimack Street, East Merrimack Street to Nesmith, there is no, considering we have the auditorium, we have the repertory theater, we have a lot of access to the hospitals, people visiting, a lot of out-of-towners, that means, going to these shows, nobody really knows that the speed limit is only 25 miles an hour, and I really hate to admit, even though I'm a, I'm involved with a lot of the Facebook Lowell pages, I hate to admit that I wasn't aware that the city limit was 25 miles either, because there are not enough signs. But anyway, I am proposing, please, if, consider the installation of traffic lights and speed humps in front of the Immaculate Conception School. Thank you very much.
Motion to Central Traffic Engineer for apartment renovation by Council Motion to Senator Traffic Engineer for apartment renovation by Council Gitcher, second by Council Janess. Counselor Belanger, quickly?
Yes, very quick, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Barbado, for coming down. She emailed me many weeks ago and let me know of this petition and I appreciate her coming down again. But she seems to be in pretty high spirits for someone who's had two cars demolished in her driveway, but nonetheless is owed some remediation. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for referring that to Traffic Engineer. I look forward to that report and action. Thank you very much.
Also, FASI, opposed motion passes, the last two, 8.3 miscellaneous, 8.4 miscellaneous. Jenny Cameron requests permission to address council regarding process to open closed gate for access to Penn View Ave. Don't see her, I see things, we'll refer that to the Traffic Engineer for recommendation, sorry, to the City Manager for apartment renovation. And 8.4, Diane Dufresne requests installation of a handicap parking sign at 17 Hudson Street. Motion to refer to Transportation Engineer for apartment renovation by Council Young, second by Council Scott, also in FASI, opposed, motion passes. Back to the 5.1. Sorry, I apologize. 5.2 official report, front-runner city presentation, delegates from the Urban Economic Forum, Economy Forum, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Councilors, welcome to what's something, this has been extremely exciting for all of us. I want to thank in attendance this evening, Mr. Spili, Mr. Matamani, and I know that we're waiting on Mr. Moreno. But tonight is really, it's a great opportunity. We had a discussion just the other day over at UMass Lowell with the Lowell Innovation Network Corridor about the power of partnership. And the power of partnership that we have here today is each councillor and all the folks that are here know the partnerships that we continue to push with our university, with Middlesex Community College, with all of our nonprofits. But I think what the mayor, and I have to tip the cap to Mayor Rook as well as all of the city council for making some trips and having discussions and being on multiple Zooms. Tonight, we're gonna have an opportunity directly to hear from our partners, our new partners in the front-runner city. And I'm just wondering if a dear friend of Cameron, if you would be interested in introducing our friends that I hope that are gonna be on in a few moments, if you want to do an introduction of who's gonna be on there to really kick this off over the next 20 minutes or so. We're gonna have an idea to talk about, once again, that power and partnership and to find out where the city of Lowell can go next. Once again, councilors, you've been brought up to speed, you've talked about this, some of you have been to some of these meetings, some of you have been on some of the Zoom meetings, but this tonight is a really exciting moment for the city to move into what I would say the next century. So, once again, Mr. Spili, if you just want to mention or say hello to the crew and then we're gonna get everyone up and running, I just want to thank, make sure that we're all set from a technical standpoint.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cameron Spili from Urban Economy Forum. We are honored here, Mayor Danny, City Manager, Mr. Tom Golden, esteemed members and City of Council, dear colleague and friends. Right now, our Chair, Reza Purbasiri, Chair of the Urban Economy Forum, they're gonna introduce the Mayor Lowell as a first US front-runner city for the urban transformation. And then he's gonna explain detail of the everythings, how to create this one for capacity building for this situation exactly. I think he's gonna be, he's ready right now. If, Reza?
It's Carlos Sosa speaking. I am...
Yes, Carlos Sosa.
Carlos Sosa, I'm the Senior Advisor for the Urban Economy Forum. Good evening, esteemed guests, council members and honor friends. It is with great respect and gratitude that we extend our warmest thanks to its worship, Danny O'Keefe, Dr. and the distinguished members of the council at Lowell. We deeply appreciate your precious welcome and the opportunity to receive into your esteemed council chambers. We are proud to share that a significant step forward collaboration was taken recently as we signed an agreement between the City of Lowell and the Urban Economy Forum at World Pavilion in Toronto. This milestone was witnessed by none other than the Honorable Bob Ray, whose presence underscored the importance of this partnership. Tonight, we are joined by a number of special guests, whose presence reflects the spirit of unity and shared vision that brought us together. I have a list of guests that are attending. Some have already left and now I'm going to mention a few that were here and we'd like to thank their presence at the beginning of the session. Mr. Douglas Reagan, UN Habitat, United Nations Human Settlements Program. Mr. Gil Penalosa, Founder and Chair of 818 Cities, Ambassador, World Urban Parks. Mr. Youssef Adani, Co-Chair of Smart GSN Nexus and Chair of G Group, joining us from Honduras. Mr. Edward Ortiz Jasson, Director of Latin American and Caribbean Urban Economy Forum. Dr. Cavani Madani, Director, United Nations University Institute for Water. Together with us and with you, we have Mr. Cameron Spili, who just spoke, and also Saman Mathemany, Head of Chair of Office of the Urban Economy Forum. Also attending with us, Mr. Mark Keely, Board Member, Urban Economy Forum, Canadian Diplomat and Civic Leader. Mr. Amir Rosa Incachi, Co- Director, Managing Director, Local Platform of Urban Finance, GPUF. Neither Garakan, Member of Urban Economy Forum, Energy Platform, joining us from Beijing. And in Toronto here in our office, we have Anya Ria, Director of Art for the Urban Economy Forum. Said, the President CEO of the World Industrial Center of Excellence and Manager of the Secretariat of the UEF Number Seven. And finally, Leila Satri, Focus Point of Communication of Richmond Hill from Runner City. This is the list, short list, and we are specifically, please, at this moment, welcome Riza Parbasiri, Chair of the Urban Economy Forum, who will now take the floor to deliver a presentation that speaks to the heart of our shared aspirations. Please welcome me in welcoming Riza Parbasiri.
Good evening, honorable city council members, your worship, Mayor Lowell, City Manager, colleagues from City of Lowell and friends. It's a deep honor to speak with you tonight at the truly historic moment in our city's journey. Today, I'm proud to announce that Lowell is the first United States front-runner city on urban transformation, a designation that placed us not only at the forefront of American urban progress, but as a leader in globally pathway that is redefining the future of cities worldwide. Lowell, your city, and I want to say now our city, is on the world map of urban transformation. We are now part of a select global network of cities shaping the future with vision, courage, and community at the center. This is not just an achievement, it's a global recognition, and it's also a call to action, a call to engage with the world and to lead from where we are. What does it mean to be a front-runner city? The front-runner city initiative, led by the Urban Economy Forum, in close collaboration with City of Lowell, and the Urban Pavilion as a joint initiative of UN Habitat and Government of Canada, is part of growing international movement to localize global development agendas like the STG, Sustainable Development Goals. To rename a front-runner city means that Lowell has been recognized for its potential to serve as a model of inclusive, climate resilient, innovation-driven urban transformation. This initiative supports a clear vision to make our city not just more equitable, but more equitable, more sustainable, and more human centered. What is the process? Becoming a front-runner city is not a one kind of work, it's a structured, multi-year efforts together. Lowell will develop an urban transformation roadmap backed by data, policy, community input, and measurable result through creative vision. We will establish a dedicated front-runner secretary to coordinate across departments and partner, and we'll launch a key package from smart mobility pilots, and alternative housing innovation, and urban revitalization infrastructure, to clean energy urban labs, and digital inclusion. Most importantly, this process brings together community voices, policy leadership, technical experts, and global partners, working in cohesion to shape the future of Lowell. Why Lowell? Why now? Because Lowell represents the full story of American cities, past, present, and future. This is the cradle of American industrial revolution, a city that invented the economy once before and is ready to do it again. A mid-sized, post-industrial city, diverse in culture, rich in history, and bold in streets. We have a multi, right now, multilingual, multi-generational population with strong civic roots. We have world-class academic and innovation assets like UMass Lowell, and we have already taken steps to shape a tech-savvy, inclusive future through initiatives like our planned digital twin, AI-driven tools, and Lowell Urban Innovation Lab. But most of all, we have the will to lead from Mayor's Office to the council chambers, from committee halls to classrooms. Lowell is ready. In terms of expected benefit for the city, the impact span across multiple domains. Economically, the development will attract mission-aligned investments, talent, and green economy opportunity. From an urban planning perspective, we aim to embed systems thinking, circular economy principles, and data-driven governance. In the area of social equity, the initiative will increase access to alternative housing, mobility, and digital inclusion. For civic engagement, it will create new platforms for community input, co-creation, and inclusive decision-making. And finally, in terms of visibility and influence, it will elevate Lowell's global reputation as a city shaping the future of urban living. Front-runner is a reason, an extraordinary reason, absorb global and national attention to Lowell, to America. Let's start with presentation. Could you at least share the screen? That's all. Okay, I called Lowell leading the way in the global urban transformation of American cities. I really appreciate your time and I understand you had lots of discussion and you must be tired. Next, I'll be trying to summarize as soon as possible. Number one, a vision for transformative urban change. This is some key strategic points. This initiative is not merely a local plan, it's a visionary program for transformative change, moving away from classical development models toward integrated, global, tech-driven urban growth. Number two, the symbolic significance of origin. The project emerged from a historically significant settlement, once a center of United States industrial revolution, which keeps its symbolic and strategic weight in leading a new wave of urban industrial integration. Number three, urban transformation as a new global benchmark. The future of cities lies in the fusion of production, living, and sustainability. This initiative aims to serve as a new global benchmark for that convergence. Number four, accurate in strategy collaboration. Through collaboration with the Urban Economy Forum and other international organizations, global actors, we ensure that this is not an isolated effort, but part of a coordinated urban transformation movement based on public participation. Number five, reimagining development resources. Development is defined by access and governance of resources. Urban finance and municipal economic models are at the heart of this initiative and will shape its implementation. Number six, positioning as a world-class initiative. This is a flat sheet project of global standard and ambition, a structure scalable and replicable with the potential to influence urban development frameworks globally. And number seven, a front-runner in capacity building. The initiative prioritized capacity building not only through infrastructure, but also through identification, training, mobilization of human and industry institutional potential. Number eight, uncovering opportunities advocating potential. The initiative is multi-layered. It seeks to discover hidden opportunities, unpacked resources, advocate for many capacities, and promote new model of innovation in urban development, integrating innovation and sustainability. We focused on integrating new technologies and sustainable system as foundation elements, not add-on in future city making. And last, raising the flag of inclusive transformation. Most importantly, this initiative raised the flag of inclusive, sustainable, and equitable urban transformation, starting from a symbolic location, but with global reach and relevance. Next? Go to the next slide? Okay. I receive expected questions from city leaders and urban thinkers. As we present this transformative initiative, we fully anticipate being met with serious and fundamental questions, particularly from you as a... as elected representatives of people of Lowell, from concerned citizens, and from the global urban community and scholars and experts and practitioners. These are not only expected, they are necessary. We must be prepared to answer key questions such as, why Lowell? What makes this city uniquely positioned to become a front runner in global urban transformation in the United States? Is this truly the best choice? Do other cities or a consortium of cities serves as a more appropriate model? What qualifies a single city to become a global role model? Should transformation emerge from collective urban experience rather than a single point? I really want to emphasize about a key part of this initiative. We develop important indexes. We call it City Prosperity Index. In collaboration with UN Habitat, we're developing the recent indexes regarding quality of life based on metadata, based on the recent methodology of kind of criteria and indexes regarding urbanization. And myself and my colleagues Eduardo Lopez work in a World Cities Report, Flagship Report of the United Nations. We try to use a kind of a model and indexes regarding creating a structure, a matrix of creating priority and also new approach and action plan based on urban data. I think we cannot say it's the end of the story, it's the beginning of this fantastic journey that we can use AI, we can use all technology, data mining regarding providing a platform and template for this. It's really complex, but we need to, at the end of the day, kind of put finalized a kind of point of old-fashioned model of urbanization and start doing and working with data and with new technology. What are the opportunity and enabling conditions that allow this initiative to succeed here? What kind of funding and long-term investment will support these efforts? What scientific, academic, and institutional capacity are being mobilized to ensure its success? I really emphasize, these are valid, powerful, and necessary questions and we welcome them because it's true facing such an inequities that we can build a solid, transparent, and legitimate foundation for what we are trying to do. Not as a showcase, but a real replicable model for urban change. Leverage local and global knowledge for complex urban concept. This is not a simple conventional concept. It's inherently complex and ambitious. And because of its complexity, we must draw upon the full spectrum of knowledge and institutional capacity available to us. We are fortunate to be surrounded by some of the world-leading academic institutions like MIT and Harvard are there in close proximity and are already engaged with the pavilion. We develop the structure of virtual pavilion with Harvard and we are working about creating a new model of urbanization with MIT. Pavilion Pavilion as collaborators and UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College as the local academic institution, we need to bridge a gap between something contextual and also world-class academic institution. But our approach goes beyond geography. We are also building a strong connection with the global centers of excellence such as University of Toronto, McGill University, and other key academic partners in Canada. Furthermore, we are aligning with leading institutions across Europe including Oxford, Cambridge, and UN University. Recently, we developed Finance for City Leaders in collaboration with Oxford University and University College of London that is kind of master document and global guide regarding providing a structure and direction regarding new approach to urban finance. And working with global hubs with, I'm telling you, more than 50 important labs connected to the important university around the world. Next? Building the urban transformation in G. We are, as Urban Economy Forum, a global platform, uniting urban thinkers and practitioners who are addressing core urban challenges cities face today, from finance and infrastructure to resilience and social inclusion. To coordinate and activate this international brain trust, we need a flexible, creative, and mission-driven secretary. One that can manage multi-sector stakeholder collaboration, foster innovation, and remain adroit as the initiative evolves. Within the system, this intellectual backbone is a core component of transformation. We envision and we must invest in this with focus, discipline, and vision. Next? Urban transformation must be citizen-centered. One of the most critical principles we must highlight and one that must guide every step forward is this. We cannot envision, design, or implement the future of city without its citizens. A city belongs to its people. Its identity, its values, and its future are deeply tied to those who live, work, raise families in it. Without actively listening to, engaging with, and responding to the needs of community, no development model, no matter how visionary, can be sustainable or legitimate. Front runner initiative means partnership. Front runner initiative means partnership. At the pavilion, the place that I'm talking from there, in Regent Park, one of the largest revitalization, we have great experience here and I encourage you to read The Rhythm of Change, the book of Michael Cohen, our funding partner, one of the fantastic from purity to implementation best practices and in one of the largest urban revitalization projects that we compare with eight other samples in the world and it's a great initiative. Everything's worked based on Goal Number 17 of United Nations, public partnership. Front runner initiative means partnership. That is why this initiative is being shaped as a collaborative process. A dynamic and deeply engaged partnership between our global team at the Urban Economy Forum, the World Pavilion Pavilion as a global hub for SGI cities of United Nations on urban sustainability, and you, leadership of the city, councillors, mayor, city manager, and citizen that you present. We envision a mechanism through which core scenario and development pathway of this project is co-developed, not imposed, through continuous dialogue, mutual learning, and shared ownership. We also want to clearly express our commitment to working within the framework of the official vision documents and the strategic plan that your city has already produced. These documents reflect the will and inspiration of people of Lowell and we are here to build on the foundation, not override it. That's the last one? Okay. It's almost done. Don't worry. We also want to clearly express our commitment to working within the framework of official vision document. It's really, really important. I really want to emphasize. An integrated, action-oriented process just a vision. As I have emphasized before, the central axis of this initiative is not a single event or isolated concept. It is a focused, continuous, and integrated process. At its core lies the development of an innovative, pragmatic business model, a model that brings together diverse stakeholders into the shared ecosystem of public value creation. This is not the dream. This is not the romanticized vision of change. This is a strategy and highly action-oriented program. The goal to generate measurable impact, long-term benefits, and ownership among all those who choose to engage with it. Whether they are public authorities, knowledge institution, private sector actors, or community organization. We are talking about an operational framework that integrates economic logic with social purpose, a model that is built to create collective benefits, not just short-term returns. And for this reason, the structure of initiative must remain open, adaptable, accountable, and transparent while being rooted in the real world needs, constraints, and aspirations of the city and its people. And last point, this is not just designation. It's an opportunity to write Lowell next chapter. With the globe, for the globe. One that honors its past and boldly designs its future. With councils and mayor leadership, Lowell can become a national prototype of equitable, resilient, and creative cities and global, replicable role model for urban transformation. We need to work with you closely, with all of you, and with all the citizens and try to visualize and legitimize our dream together. And we need to start. I really appreciate.
Reza, thank you very much. Stay a hole for a minute. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council and to the citizens of Lowell. You can see the excitement that we have here going on. And to the council as it had the opportunity to go up into Toronto. You saw the transformation that happened in Regent Park. And I think that everyone that had the opportunity, believe me, will have other opportunities, I'm sure. Just as many of our friends from the UEF are listening. Reza, to you and your team, I want to say thank you very much. Thank you very much for your hospitality when we're in Canada. And thank you very much for sending down such a fine contingent of folks working with us here over the next few days. But this is really about the transformation of the city of Lowell and what is going to be happening in the future. It is interesting to say, or powerful to say, that, and the council knows this, the global partners that we are creating right here in the city of Lowell, the global partners that we're creating. The mayor, as well as this entire council, didn't wait for it to come to us. We went out and sought it. And that's probably the most important piece and that's probably the most exciting piece. The power that we have and the partnerships that we've created just here, that power has doubled, has tripled, has quadrupled with what the UEF is going to bring to this organization, bring to our city of Lowell. And I think that I want to say thank you very much to the mayor. Thank you very much to the council for making this happen. We have people here today. We're going to talk very briefly. I'm going to kick it over to the Assistant City Manager to just talk about what is going to be happening over the next few days. I'll tell you, as anyone that went to the Toronto trip, you know two days means two full days of working. And I know that my friend Reza, thank you very much being up in Toronto. I know we'll be back to see you. And I know that you're going to be down here to see us. This is only the first. This is the beginning. But this is truthfully going to be the next chapter. So I'd like to ask the Assistant City Manager to go over just a couple of items right now as to what's going to be happening. If anyone's listening and you're interested in participating or somehow thinking about it or if something comes across that really is something you want to talk about, don't hesitate to call the office tomorrow. Over the next 48 hours, there's going to be a lot of excitement, a lot of things happening. We're very excited to get to start the conversation. But if I could ask the Assistant City Manager just to run through a few things before we close up.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So in alignment with the goals of the Front Runner City Program, we tried to pull together an itinerary that would show the delegation sort of who we are in Lowell, what we're doing, who's here. And so that means we're pulling together representatives from our nonprofit organizations across the city to discuss, you know, who they are, the kind of constituencies that they're working with. We are taking them on a bus tour around the city of a variety of potential development opportunities that we see as a city. You know, places where there are opportunities for commercial development, like our Hamilton Canal District, places where we could see more residential housing. So we're going to bring them on a bus tour around the city so they can have those opportunities. We're also going to be pulling together a number of representatives of the city's development community, people who are already here and investing in Lowell, people who have active projects either underway or in pre-development, and people who've been doing work in Lowell for a number of years. People who, you know, I think can hopefully get a message across about why they're already investing in Lowell and what has attracted them to Lowell. We're going to be bringing them on a tour of the Link District and meeting with representatives from the university, an important stakeholder group, you know, to get a sense of that project, the economic development impact a project like that could have. And then, of course, we're going to be having discussions with our government officials. So, you know, we're fortunate enough here in the city of Lowell to have great relationships with, you know, Congresswoman Trahan, for example. So being able to not only bring people from the federal government together, but also representatives of the state. The Lieutenant Governor will be able to join us. The Secretary of E H O L C, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I'm still working on remembering that. The Secretary of Economic Development. So people who, you know, can talk to the delegation about, you know, why Massachusetts is a place where, you know, we're happy to see this kind of investment. I think, you know, my job, I think, for the week and the job of the folks in the Planning Department and our Sustainability Division will be really to impress upon our visitors that, you know, we are eager and really happy to get going on this partnership but that we are doing a lot of these things, that a lot of the work that the UEF and the World Pavilion prioritizes are things that this community also prioritizes and things that we have actively already been investing in and working towards. And I think, I'm really excited. I think that this partnership is going to be an opportunity for us to expand the things that we're already doing. And I hope that during the course of their visit here, that they'll get a better sense of kind of what's on the ground and what our opportunities are.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Rose. It's important to note, everyone, that we had people from around the world watching this today. People from around the world that want to be partners with us to make sure that this city grows in the right direction. I'm looking at every council here that is consistently trying to do, what is the next best thing for this city? What is the next best thing for not only the residents but for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts? And I think we've found partners that are willing to do that. When you talk about what is happening, when you talk about what Reza was discussing, the excitement you can hear in his voice, my voice, in the Assistant City Manager, but as well as the mayor. So development of not just housing, housing for everyone. Development of business, how to control, how to help our business grow, how to help our tax base grow. If, in the next trip that I guarantee you will be invited- will be invited back to see what happened up in Regent Park and to meet our partners face to face. Throughout the next 48 hours, I say, we'll be talking to a lot of our partners right through Zoom, some of our partners being here, making this trip. So I just have to say thank you very much to our partners that made it. I know that we still have some folks coming in on planes. I think really in the next five to 10 minutes. So we have more people coming in, the excitement is here. We are ready to listen, we are ready to be a partner. This power of partnerships that this council is known for and that this city is known for, I think, is going to be next, it's going to be generational. This is going to make a difference for the next generation of Lowell. I want to thank the council and especially want to thank the mayor for ferreting this out and really working hard. But to the council that was here, the council that have made the calls, every single one of you have been playing a part to make sure that the city of Lowell is going into what I would consider another growth phase. Other people are concerned with where we're going. We're going to keep our foot on the gas to keep moving our city in the right direction and I think this is just one of those opportunities that is going to make that happen. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to the council. Thank you, a special thank you to the UEF and the World Pavilion for choosing us as the first front-runner city in the United States of America. That is going to be something that I think we're all going to be proud of and we had a lot of work to do in the future. But once again, in closing, I just want to say thank you all very much for being here and thank you very much, Reza, and all of the teammates that are on and the teammates that you sent. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you all very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any announcements? Mr. Councilor?
Yes, on behalf of the entire city council, we want to wish Councilor Robinson a happy, healthy and prosperous year to come, councillor. We love you.
Most enjoyed by council, good chance to get by council, mercy also first, I pose.
Top of what we have.